Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. On behalf of the members of the School Board and our superintendent, I welcome each of you watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the School Division. As you may be aware on the agenda that was sent that you may have in your possession, a closed meeting was not held today, so there's no need to certify the closed meeting. That meeting was counseled. So this evening, I would like to read a little statement. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an unprecedented effect on all of us. With the closure of schools and businesses, our daily lives have changed. We are all adapting to this temporary new way of life, and School Board doing the same thing as well. We are implementing new procedures for our meeting. This evening, we are holding an electronic meeting to transact the business of the School Board, and in doing so, we are participating, we are practicing social distancing in cooperation with the Governor's order. We are taking these steps to ensure the health and well-being of our staff, students, and the public. We would prefer to conduct our meetings face-to-face with an audience, but like so many of you, we understand the importance of doing all we can to flatten the curve of the coronavirus. Tonight, I'm in the School Administration Auditorium, and I'm joined by Superintendent Dr. Parker, by the Deputy City Attorney, by our School Board Clerk, Ms. Moore Buffalo, and three staff members. School members are connected virtually, and the public will be able to see and hear as we review and discuss School Board business. The audience with individuals and public conference section of our agenda has also, as temporarily, has changed. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via our web form, email, voicemail, up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting records. All comments will be provided to all School Board members. We are committed to conducting our meetings in an open manner, and we will make every effort to ensure the public has input. We value and appreciate your partnership. We will begin tonight's meeting with a pledge of allegiance to our flag. So I would ask you, would you please stand?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible,天地，a justice for all.
Well, thank you. So we'll move our agenda into the audience with individuals. Audience with individuals, as we stated earlier, the School Board has revised our public input procedures due to social distancing and large gatherings restrictions. Citizens are encouraged to submit comments to the School Board electronically or by phone. Visit our webpage at nnschools.org forward slash board to access the web form, email, addresses, and phone line. So at this time, we would have a board recognitions and a Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to our public who are viewing online this evening. As Chairman Hunter stated earlier, the COVID-19 pandemic has greatly impacted all of us. The Governor's mandatory school closure has certainly changed how we deliver instruction and essential operations. We understand the challenges facing our families, and Newport News Public Schools will continue to partner with our families to provide at-home learning materials, meals-to-go for students, and other helpful resources. I am proud of how our staff has stepped up to support our students, families, and community while dealing with their own circumstances. So tonight, we are celebrating our dedicated staff. Across the School Division, teachers at all levels are ensuring that students are engaged in at-home learning with packets, experiments, online instruction, and virtual class meetings. This has been well-received. We have heard from many students and parents via email and social media up to this point. So special thanks to our teachers, coaches, and school counselors, interventionists, and other assistants who support the Department of Teaching and Learning. And kudos to our school's social workers and psychologists who are making sure that our students continue to receive the social emotional support that they need to thrive. Additionally, employees in child nutrition, transportation, technology, and security are actively supporting our students and families daily during this closure. At sites throughout the city, our child nutrition staff, bus drivers, and security officers are distributing meals-to-go and instructional packets to families. Initially, we started with six feeding sites were created, and in an effort, we expanded to include mobile feeding sites, and now our team is distributing about 5,000 meals per day each weekday. This is also a testament to our bus repair and maintenance team for keeping our buses rolling. Our meals-to-go team goes above and beyond every day, and for that, we say thank you. We'd also like to say kudos to our technology team. They have distributed over 1,100 Chromebooks and 250 Wi-Fi hotspots to families and help troubleshoot issues with connectivity for students who are learning at home. I also want to thank and acknowledge our professional office staff, our administrative team, and business office team, and the community relations team in conjunction with HR for their efforts for ensuring central operations and communication in our schools. We want to thank school leadership and our administrators and building administrators and our youth development team who are doing all they can to ensure that students feel connected and supported. Through social media, virtual meetings, and Newport News Public Schools connect opportunities, this team is making sure that our students are engaged, connected, and well-informed. Without pause, we know that these are trying times, but together, the Newport News Public Schools family is making a difference for students and families to whom we serve. On behalf of our School Board and our leadership team, we say thank you for all that our staff are doing to support our community and support our students during this crisis. I have two additional special acknowledgements this evening. This week is Administrative Professionals Appreciation Week. We send a special thank you to our professional office staff for their dedicated support, office management, and customer service. And this is also the National School Leadership Week. So we want to thank our student leaders for their service to our schools and the community. And I'm sending a special shout-out to Mr. Isaiah Gore, our Student Advisory Committee Chair, and also representative on the School Board. And good to see you join us this evening, Isaiah. That concludes the recognitions this evening, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Well, at this time, we will continue with our agenda. Item number three, we have our consent agenda. 3.01 Minutes Regular Session, March 24th, 2020. 3.02 Financial Reports, Child Nutrition Services, March 2020. Revenue and Expenses, March 2020. 3.03 Personnel Report. 3.04 Budget Transfer. 3.05 Lease of Airport Hangar for Aviation Academy Program. Is there a motion to acceptance of the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the special, excuse me, I've moved to approve the presented consent agenda to include minutes, financial reports, personnel report, budget transfer, and the lease of airport hangar for Aviation Academy Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move to second the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
You heard the motion, and you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Moore Buffalo, please call the row.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best.
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Alger.
Maritza Alger, four.
Mr. Brown.
Douglas Brown, four.
Mr. Ely.
John Ely, four.
Mr. Harris.
Marvin Harris, four.
And Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, four. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number four, our action items. Yes, sir, Dr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one personnel item that was on the consent agenda, and at this time, I would like to acknowledge that promotion. This candidate was brought to us as a potential for a director's level position with the Office of Assessment and Strategic Operations. The formal title is Director of Equity Assessment and Strategic Operations, who will manage the program evaluations, oversee and work with our testing, coordinate our testing program and assessment, and monitoring the fine work of our strategic plan moving forward. I'd like to introduce our new director, who is Dr. Shamika Gerald, who is currently the principal at Heritage High School, and Shamika has served as the principal at Heritage High School since 2014. She has a math background, which she is now, will now have to put to use in this new position because it is a position that requires some statistical analysis and program evaluation. Prior to becoming the principal at Heritage High School, she served as the assistant principal at Demby High School from 2010 to 2014, and came to us from Norfolk Public Schools where she served as a middle school, as a high school, excuse me, and middle school math teacher in Norfolk Public Schools. Dr. Gerald brings a wealth of talent to our administrative, central office administrative team. We're looking forward to her leadership as we look at broadening our assessment of our programs in Newport News and also strengthening the work of our strategic plan. So at this time, I think we asked Dr. Gerald to join us on this meeting call, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give Dr. Gerald an opportunity to introduce herself.
Good evening, Newport News Public Schools family. I am Dr. Gerald, proud principal of Heritage High School, and I'm definitely excited about the opportunity to work in the Department of Accountability as the Director of Equity Assessments and Strategic Operations. I would be remiss if I did not thank my 5,800 family for a phenomenal experience, and it really, the work there has really prepared me for my next steps moving forward. So I just want to thank you, Newport News Public Schools, for this opportunity and the ability to serve Heritage High School for the past six years.
Thank you, Dr. Gerald. I believe the whole board is excited to have you on board. Again, congratulations on your doctorate.
Thank you.
And we look forward to all the great things that you will be bringing to us and adding to our School Division. So again, congratulations on behalf of the entire School Board.
Well, thank you, and I would be remiss if I didn't say hello to my mom and dad who are watching. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that all, Dr. Parker?
That concludes promotions at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Then we will move the agenda to action items. Item 4.01, our Special Education Annual Plan. We did hear that plan at our last School Board meeting. Can we have a motion to approve that particular plan?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Special Education Federal Plan, the amount of $6,479,995.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I move to second the motion to approve the Special Education Plan.
You heard the motion and the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Moore Buffalo, please call the row.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best.
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Alger.
Maritza Alger, four.
Mr. Brown.
Douglas Brown, four.
Mr. Ely.
John Ely, four.
Mr. Harris.
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, four. Thank you. Our next item we have is 4.02 Suspension of the School Board Policy Resolution.
Mr. Chairman, the resolution reads as follows. Newport News School Board, whereas on March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared novel coronavirus COVID-19 outbreak a pandemic, and whereas on March 12th, 2020, Governor Ralph F. Northam issued Executive Order 51 declaring a state of emergency. That executive order stated that the anticipated effects of COVID-19 constitute a disaster and direct directed local governments, which include school boards, to render appropriate assistance to prepare for the event, to alleviate any conditions resulting from the situation, and to implement recovery and mitigation operations and activities so as to return impacted areas to pre-event conditions as much as possible. And whereas, Executive Order 51 authorized executive branch agencies, including the Virginia Department of Education, to waive any state regulation as appropriate. And whereas, on March 13th, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national emergency in response to the spread of COVID-19. And whereas, on March 13th, 2020, Governor Ralph F. Northam ordered all K through 12 schools to close for a minimum of two weeks. Whereas, on March 13th, 2020, Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction encouraged local school divisions to consider options and ideas to engage students in reading, thinking, and learning while schools are closed. And whereas, on March 18th, 2020, H.R. 6201 was passed by the United States Congress and signed into law by the President, H.R. 6201, now P.L. 116-127, contains the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act and the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act, both of which will be in effect until December 31, 2020. And whereas, on March 23rd, 2020, Governor Northam issued Executive Order 53, which closed all public schools through the Commonwealth for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. And whereas, on March 30th, 2020, the United States Department of Education gave permission to Virginia to cancel federally mandated standards of learning tests during the 2019-2020 school year. And whereas, on March 27th, 2020, Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction stated in Superintendent's Memo 082-20A, Attachment A, which was later converted into a website and is being updated frequently, that he will provide as much flexibility as is prudent and allowed by the Code of Virginia for students currently enrolled and graduating with the 2019-2020 cohort. Whereas, P.L. 116-127 also contains the COVID-19 Child Nutrition Response Act, which gives the Secretary of Agriculture the authority to grant waivers related to the Richard B. Russell National School Lunch Act, 42SUSC1761, which authority expires on September 30th, 2020. And whereas, Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction has announced that numerous regulatory requirements will be waived as authorized by Executive Order 51. And whereas, on April 2nd, 2020, the Virginia Board of Education indicated its approval for waiving certain regulatory requirements regarding awarding standard units of credit and local awarded verified credits. And whereas, additional waivers of existing state and federal regulations and changes to state and federal laws may be announced during the pandemic. And whereas, the Newport News School Board policies reflect requirements of state and federal laws and regulates that we have already been waived or may be waived because of the pandemic. And whereas, Newport News School Board's usual practice is to make changes to policies only after the proposed policy change is considered at two School Board meetings. And whereas, the Newport News School Board needs to be able to adapt School Division operations to rapid changes in law and regulation. And whereas, enforcing the requirements of existing policies could result in outcomes inconsistent with current laws and regulations as they exist after waivers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Newport News School Board suspends such policies or provisions within policies which reflect legal and/or regulatory requirements that have been waived by the governmental authority which enacted those requirements. And now, therefore, be it further resolved that the suspension of policies of the Newport News School Board is in effect for the duration of time that the waiver of laws and/or regulations reflected in the policies are waived. And now, therefore, be it further resolved that the superintendent is directed to inform the School Board of any regulations that are suspended by the superintendent and the duration of such suspensions. And now, for be it further resolved that the Newport News School Board will comply with temporary laws and regulations without enacting policies to implement those laws and regulations. And now, for therefore, and therefore, be it further resolved that the adoption of this resolution is conclusive evidence of the Newport News School Board's approval of all the actions cited in this resolution. Adopted and approved this 21st day of April, 2020, signed Chairman Gary Hunter.
Is there a second?
I second the motion to adopt the new policy.
You heard the motion, and you heard the second. A time for the question. There being none, Ms. Moore Buffalo, please call the row.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best.
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Alger.
Maritza Alger, four.
Mr. Brown.
Douglas Brown, four.
Mr. Ely.
John Ely, four.
Mr. Harris.
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, four. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Laws, for reading that long resolution. We will move on to item number five, Reports and Information. First up, 5.01 COVID-19 Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have my staff prepared to provide an update, a monthly update on the COVID-19 crisis. Each of the upcoming board meetings, until we are back to normal operations, our staff will provide the board with a, and community, with an update on our efforts to continue with school operations and service to the community. This presentation tonight may have a little bit more detail than future presentations, but we want to make sure that we're getting good information out to the community as well. We ask that the board members, so that the PowerPoint will stay on the screen throughout the presentation, jot down any questions you may have, and there will be an opportunity to ask questions at the conclusion of the information that's provided. Thank you. I just want to confirm that we're not having technical difficulty. I think first up is school operations.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, Mr. Hunter, and members of the board. This is Mary Lou Rosso, and I'm going to start us off with an update on what's going on in response to the pandemic, COVID-19 pandemic, in the operations areas. Michelle, I think, is going to advance the slides for us. I can't see the slides, so Michelle, I'm not sure where we are, but let me start with the operations slide. Do you have that up? There we go. Okay. All right. I am pleased to have this opportunity to update you on what our support staff has been doing over the last month or so in response to this pandemic. I may be justly accused of being a little bit biased. I'm always proud of the work that our support staff does, but certainly they've risen to this challenge, I think, and done great work over the last month to get our schools up and going. I'll talk about our feeding operation. Dr. Parker has mentioned a little bit about that already in just a minute, but in addition to our child nutrition staff who has been making that feeding happen, our transportation staff has been working to support that. As Dr. Parker mentioned, we have seven schools that are operating to prepare food as well as to serve students there, but we also have 17 mobile sites. And so our bus drivers and bus assistants, accompanied by our security staff, pick up food at the school where it's prepared and then deliver it to our 17 mobile sites each day. Our custodial staff has been cleaning and disinfecting all of our workspaces. After the schools closed, they spent three days doing some deep cleaning in our schools and disinfecting all of our workspaces. Disinfecting has been something that has been the normal part of our cleaning protocol, so we had the equipment necessary to make that happen as well as the staff know-how. We were even able to loan some of our equipment to the city so that they could disinfect some of their buildings as well. And in addition to our buildings, our staff also disinfected our buses. We want to make sure that all of our workspaces and buses are safe for our staff and for our students. Plant services have been responding to essential maintenance needs as they arise, as well as getting a jump on some major capital projects. You're going to hear this evening an update on our Aviation Academy relocation, so I'll leave that for later. We have already begun the roof replacement at Lee Hall Elementary School, and we are in the process of getting started on the Deer Park and Woodside HVAC replacements. Normally, these projects wouldn't be able to start until school is out in June, and you know that sometimes we have to race against the clock to get the work completed before school starts again in the fall. So we're hopeful that having a little more time to get these projects addressed in the current climate will allow us to be ready when school starts again in the fall. In addition to getting the Chromebooks and hotspots out, our technology staff has also been working on some projects that normally they would work on in the summer. They've been getting some, working with our vendors to get security camera, fire and intrusion system, and PA and clock system installations done. Again, normally, this would happen in the summer, but having access to the schools has allowed us to get started on that a little bit sooner. Our preventive maintenance on projectors and smart boards and other classroom technology can happen now with, they've got a little more ready access to our classrooms, and as well as preventive maintenance on our technology infrastructure. And they have been prepping and distributing Chromebooks during Wednesday office hours. Michelle can go to the next slide. They have, our technology staff has distributed already, as Dr. Parker said, 1,180 Chromebooks and 250 Wi-Fi hotspots. This is in addition to the 3,000 devices that our students that are at the one-to-one high schools already have at home for learning. This is in addition to the 3,000 devices that our students that are at the one-to-one high schools already have at home for learning. We'll continue, some of those distributions happened at some of our schools before we began Wednesday hours, but they will continue now as we have Wednesday hours. And in fact, tomorrow, we have about 500 more Chromebooks scheduled to be made available to students and another 175 hotspots. So kudos to our technology staff, and they have had some volunteers to assist them with that. Okay, Michelle. Next slide. I'll pause a minute, let the technology catch up. Okay, thanks, Michelle. Next, I want to talk about our Meals to Go program. Our child nutrition staff jumped right on getting our meals to go up and ready. A big concern for us once schools were closed was how our kids get fed. So that's their day-to-day work, and they wanted to make sure it happened whether we were in school or not. So that's been going on since the second day we were out of school. Notice on this slide that you may not know, but we have been feeding from 11:30 to 12:30. From 11:30 to 1:00, we are now going to move starting tomorrow, 11:30 to 12:30. An hour will be plenty of time for us to serve everybody. And that is what we're going to do starting tomorrow. Okay, Michelle. We have been listening to the community as additional sites have been proposed to make sure that we have mobile sites where we where we need to, to make sure kids can have ready access to food. So we added just these three sites just last week. Courthouse Way, Community Center, Kate's Trace Apartments, and James River Flats Apartments. As I mentioned, we are going to change the time to 11:30 to 12:30. Okay, Michelle. These are the schools where our meals are prepared as well as the, so as well as students can get meals there. But the meals that are served on our buses from our buses are prepared at these sites as well. So as I mentioned, the drivers pick up the meals at these sites and then take them to the mobile sites. Okay, Michelle. And these are the mobile sites that we have operating in addition to the three that were on the earlier slide. So we have 17 mobile sites. I do want to mention one more addition that we're making to our meals program. This will start next Tuesday. This is pretty exciting. We're joining in a partnership with the World Central Kitchen to provide dinners on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. I'm sorry, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays to our students. So in addition to picking up breakfast and lunch on those days, they'll also be able to pick up a dinner. And they're going to provide 5,000 dinners each day, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. So we're very excited to get that started. That will start next Tuesday, 28. We have reached on average about 5,000 meals per day. You can see that we started on our first day, March 17th, just a little over 1,000 meals, and it's grown to 5,000 or more. Over the last month, we have served 113,000 meals to our kids. So thanks to the staff that has made that happen, I know that our kids and their families appreciate it. Okay, now what I want to share with you next is a little bit about what we know and maybe as well what we don't know about how this pandemic is going to affect our funding. Okay, Michelle. So let me talk a little bit about what we do know. We have received word from the state that the Federal Cares Act will provide nine, about $9.3 million in stimulus funding to Newport News Public Schools. We'll have a more firm number, we believe, later this week. We also have indications from the state that our state budget will be reduced, this is for FY21, by 5.4 million or so. The governor has made some proposed recommendations that the General Assembly will take up tomorrow when they reconvene in Richmond. And we'll find out after they reconvene what it is exactly that will happen. Once they're done with their work tomorrow, the State Department of Ed will send us our division-specific information about state budget funding for next year. What the governor is planning to do at this point, or at least what he's proposed to do, is it's really too soon for the state to have a good handle on what will happen with their revenue. So rather than change the budget permanently for now, he's going to, he's recommended that they make some reductions in some areas, and in some other areas, they just suspend funding until they can do a reforecast of their revenue, which currently they plan to do at the end of the summer. And that makes perfect sense. I mean, until then, it's hard to think that they would have a real handle on what's going to go on and what the impact on their revenue would be. So that's certainly sensible. But for the moment, we do expect to see a reduction of 5.4 million. Some of that is reduction, some of it is suspension. In fact, most of this is right now characterized as a suspension. Of significance, of course, is the raise that was included in the budget, and that is proposed to be suspended for the moment. The reduction that is perhaps also of some interest is in the staffing for guidance counselors. Right now, the governor has suggested that that not be included in next year's budget. So I put on here the impact to FY21's budget. I didn't put on here, but let me share with you that there is also an impact, of course, in FY22. You know that the state's budget is a biennial budget. At the moment, the reduction that's proposed for Newport News Public Schools in that budget for '22 is $9.2 million. What we don't know yet is what the impact on this year's budget will be, but we do know that there will be one. Perhaps, as you know, part of our state revenue is sales tax revenue. And last year, we received about $30 million during the year, course of the year, in sales tax. Over the last three years, I'm sorry, the last three months of last year, we received just under $8 million. And this year, our sales tax revenue has been trending up about 5.5% above last year's sales tax. So ordinarily, we would have expected, absent this pandemic, that we would receive a little over $8 million in sales tax revenue for the last quarter. Our sales taxes received two months in arrears. So for, in the month of May, we'll receive the sales tax for sales that happened in March. So remember that the pandemic really started, I guess, in March, we could say, but some of the actual closing of things didn't happen until the middle of the month. But I don't think until June, when we see April's sales tax, we'll have a real, clear indication of what's going to happen to our sales tax. Of course, our fiscal year ends at the end of June, so the timing could be maybe worse. I'm not exactly sure how. But that will certainly impact our revenue for this year. And again, hard to say how much. But let's just say, if we were to receive half of our sales tax for the last three months of this year, we could see a reduction of $4 million in our revenue this year in the last quarter. So we're going to watch that very closely, as you might expect. And we'll be updating you, of course, as Dr. Parker says, in future meetings about how that's going. I did think that as we look about what to expect, I would share with you some of the headlines of articles that I've been reading, and you might want, you might worry about some of the things that I read, but somebody has to read it. So but for schools, this recession will be worse than the last. Some of you might remember the last one. I know I do. Draconian cuts to schools could come as soon as this summer, and schools are scaring down a fiscal tsunami. So some of it sounds a little dire. We're going to try to take advantage of the situation like we typically do and make the best of it. So we'll see what we can make happen despite what seem to be some challenging financial situations. Okay, Michelle. So on this slide, this is a slide you've seen before. It's a little different this time. It shows by some major state revenue categories. The General Assembly approved budget, and then now the governor's revision to that. So as I mentioned, right now, the teacher pay increase is proposed to be suspended for '21. That was about $2.6 million for us in terms of funding. The school counselors, as I said, he's taken out of the budget and not suspended. It just proposed that those not be funded in the budget. And he has included, continued to include this additional staffing for ESL. And so that's certainly good for us. And they have made some changes to the early childhood budget, but we still will see some increase, not as much as we'd originally anticipated. Another area of significant change is the at-risk add-on. We'll see a decrease there, but at least we'll see some additional funding. So in total, again, our change from the General Assembly budget, $5.4 million decrease. Okay, Michelle. And then I mentioned the stimulus funding, and so I want to talk a little bit about that. We do think right now our estimate from the state is $9.3 million that we would get in terms of exactly when we get it. I think that we'll know more about that later this week. Excuse me. But I wanted to share with you some of the things that we are able to use this funding for. They talk about the use of it allowed to be for preparedness and response efforts responding to the pandemic crisis. Most important for us, I think, is making sure that we meet the needs of our students. So whether it's our low-income students, students with disabilities, our ELT students, doesn't matter, just meeting the needs of all of our students. It allows for us to do some training and purchasing of supplies for sanitation. We think we have what we need for that. So I don't think that we'll need to spend a lot of money on that. We want to make sure that we spend this money most effectively. So one of the things certainly that we have seen the impact of is is technology and the need for that. So we hope that we'll be able to spend some of this money on more technology as well as providing mental health services and some summer learning opportunities for our kids. We do have more unknowns at this time of year than we usually do. But just know that we are working overtime to figure out just how we can make things work in this challenging environment. So to tell you more about what learning is going to continue to look like as we move forward, here's Dr. Paul.
Thank you, Ms. Rousseau. Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Searls Law, board members, and Dr. Parker. I'm here this evening to review the continuity of learning plan. I'd like to start by sharing information that has led us to the continuity of learning plan that was released last week. First and foremost was the four-pronged approach laid out by the Virginia Department of Education. Dr. Lane shared that students had to have the opportunity to learn the standards not yet taught by the school closures after March 13th, 2020. He said divisions had four options of covering the material that had not yet been taught. These options are for divisions to provide instruction of new material during the closure, to provide instruction during the summer, to adjust the 2021 school year calendar, or to incorporate learning modules into the 2021 school year to cover the missed learning. As you'll hear during this presentation, we have chosen to incorporate three of these four options for our students to give them the most flexibility. In addition, since the closure, we have provided teachers with several opportunities to learn best practices for online instructional practice as well as proper use of Zoom and how to offer feedback through electronic means. We will continue to offer sessions through the spring for all teachers on a weekly basis. Beginning with the elementary plan, there are four phases that I would like to share. First, from March 16th through April 27th, the learning packets have been focused only on a spiral review of topics for students. All of the packet learning was based on standards that have been taught and assessed up to March 13th. These were posted online and printed for parents to pick up at the students' homeschool or at the food distribution sites. Next, starting April 27th, which is next week, through the end of the school year, learning packets will continue. However, those packets will incorporate a spiral review for math and reading with some new learning for social studies and science. This new learning is paired with using the five Cs and will offer opportunities for students to earn certificates as well as badges during the fourth quarter. Then we are planning for some type of summer learning experience for students. This experience will depend on what social distancing will look like this summer. Third-quarter report cards will have recommendations for summer school sent to students who are struggling as of March 13th. As we learn more, we'll update the board on what summer school may look like this summer. Finally, all of the fall elementary curriculum is being modified to include the missing standards from the 2019-2020 school year. This will ensure that all of our students have the necessary supports in place to learn the missed topics for March 13th through the end of the school year. The next set of packets will include the suggested daily learning plan with structuring their try to help parents structure their child's learning. The COVID-19 Academic Plan site includes several suggestions for STEM, physical activity, music, art, and social emotional activities, which are also listed on the suggested daily learning plan. The elementary plan also lays out expectations for learning that include using the daily learning plan, reviewing the teacher's feedback on assignments, and to contact teachers during office hours for additional assistance. There's been additional support for our English language learners, including mailing packets directly to our newcomers, translating all of our work to Spanish, and providing online support with our EL teachers. Later in the presentation, you'll hear specific information on supports being provided to our students with disabilities. During the fourth quarter, elementary students will not receive grades, nor will this negatively affect their final grade. Students receive TI for work turned in where the student has submitted the recommended number of assignments each week and responded to feedback from their teachers, and NT for any work not turned in where the student has not submitted the assignments from the instructional learning packets. Final grades will be determined through the average of the grades from the first three quarters. Although third quarter has ended, students can submit work to improve their grade up to May 15th. The third-quarter grading window will open at that time, and teachers will be allowed to use the submitted work to improve students' grades. Again, no grades will be lower than what a student had as of March 13th. Moving on to the secondary plan, you will see there are four phases here as well. From March 16th through April 17th, teachers reached out to students and provided some online support for learning as devices were being checked out to any student who needed one. Nothing assigned was graded unless it helped a student's grade for the third quarter. This week, on Monday, started the fourth-quarter plan for all secondary students. This plan includes virtual lessons that consist of live video conferencing with a teacher, pre-recorded video lessons to view, independent work that students will complete on their own, and/or projects that allow for voice and choice in assignments. There are new learning topics being covered since we are able to check out devices to students to need them. There's an expectation of a level of mastery on assigned work in order for a student to earn a final grade for their current classes. If the student does not complete the work or show mastery, there will be a plan in place for summer learning, whether it's face-to-face or online. If they are not able to attend the summer learning opportunity, modules will be developed for students to complete in the fall. One of the items we noticed early on was the overlapping of Zoom appointments for students. They were just way too busy and overbooked. They would have multiple classes happening at the same time. This led to a schedule to be developed that started this week for all secondary schools. This one is the middle school schedule. You can see students have lessons each day based on their time and their content. So for example, on Monday is the math day. So if you're a sixth grader, your teacher will be online and live Mondays from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. And that's where you'll receive some math instruction for the week. Tuesday, they'll receive their science, and you can see how the, how it goes. And then we have office hours on here and planning time on here for teachers. That's also where we'll be offering professional development to our teachers for online instructional practice. Here's the high school schedule that follows their block schedules. When developing the schedules, consideration was also given to families with multiple students and only having possibly one device in many instances. Therefore, we tried to make it so it didn't overlap, although there are some circumstances where it has to overlap. On the secondary or the high school schedule, rather, you can see that we follow the school's block schedules. And again, on Friday, we tried to leave that open for some PLCs and planning and additional office hours and professional development for our teachers. As with elementary students, there's an expectation of learning for secondary students. They're to check email twice daily, work to complete and strive for mastery on all assignments, review the teacher's feedback on the assignments, review the Zoom schedule to participate in live lessons, contact teachers for instructional assistance during their office hours, contact your school counselor for special circumstances, contact your teacher or principal if you don't have a device or internet service, use the resources on the NPS homepage for enrichment, and then exercise and do something fun and take time to unplug daily too, because we because we don't want the student sitting in front of a screen for seven hours a day either. Since the fourth quarter allows students to submit work for grading, as you'll hear about in a few slides, teachers will assess students' mastery in a variety ways to include online mini-assessments, performance-based assessments where students could do video responses, they could be artistic or musical representations. They have options for writing, like quick writes or reflective writing, personal writing in journals or graphic organizers, student-selected activities to complete. And we're also utilizing a great variety of our division purchased online programs such as iXL or No Red Ink, Achieve 3000 and Imagine Learning. A few points of additional information. The VDOE has waived all industry certification requirements for our seniors and a plan is being developed for underclassmen. Driver's education is being offered synchronously online to meet the requirement of the minimum of 30 hours of instruction. Therefore, our students who are in driver's ed or supposed to be in it during the fourth quarter will still receive that instruction. And all they'll have to complete is behind the wheel. I know that was a large concern of our community. This will allow students to complete what they had to complete during the third quarter or have the full course. As you may have seen, IB has canceled their exams and students for AP will be able to take their exams at home online. They have the option. Finally, students enrolled in Virtual Virginia courses as well as dual enrollment courses will follow the guidelines provided by each organization to complete their courses. However, we've put the same specifications in place on our end that the students' grades could not be hurt by the end if they're, if they're struggling for a reason of the COVID-19 close down. For marking period three, students will earn their grade as of March 13th. However, students will be allowed to submit missing assignments to improve their third quarter grade up to May 15th, when the grading window for third quarter will open again for teachers. Again, students may only improve based off of work completed. So if their grades were set March 13th and they didn't want to increase it, they won't. But nothing from that point forward will be allowed to decrease their third quarter grade. Secondary students will have the opportunity to earn numerical grades during the fourth quarter. They must show mastery of learning new material or they will receive an incomplete, which would make the students eligible for summer school or the learning module in the fall to show the mastery of learning that was missed. Teachers will record as a TI for turned in or NT for not turned in prior to grading the assignments. As long as a student submits their work and shows a monicum level of mastery, they will successfully, successfully complete their course if they were in good standing as of March 13th. Final grades for secondary students will be administered in two ways, whichever benefits the student. If their grade was better through March 13th, they earn that grade. If fourth quarter grades benefit the students, then they'll be averaged into the students' final grades. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Mitchell, who's going to share some information on special education and social emotional learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Searls Law, Board members and Dr. Parker. Today, I am pleased to share with you information about our special education learning plan and social emotional supports. The at-home learning plan expectations for students with disabilities mirrors the ones reviewed by Dr. Paul earlier in the presentation with the exception of modified schedules. Students and families should review feedback on all assignments from teachers and contact the teacher if extra help is needed during office hours. In cases when the general education learning plan needs to be modified, we've done so already in the learning packets, because it may be necessary to accommodate for individual needs such as short breaks or work spread out over a longer period of time. Many of the packets for students with disabilities outline or suggest a different pacing for daily routines during at-home learning. We have also mailed packets to students when necessary. Teachers have been in contact with parents and parents have informed them whether or not they are able to get to the school in order to receive a packet. If they're not able to get to the school, the teachers email me and then I make sure that the packet is put in the mail and their parents receive it via the mail. So some of the structure for the actual learning plan may vary depending on the need. So please keep in mind that approximately 60% of our students with disabilities actually access the general education curriculum with supports and the remainder of the students are supported through the use of an adapted or modified curriculum. So our secondary students with disabilities who are accessing the general curriculum, they continue to participate in online learning with their peers, still having access to some of the things Dr. Paul mentioned like No Red Ink or iXL. But they continue to be supported by their special education teachers and their content teacher through Google Classroom, Zoom meetings, as well as a variety of other means. The students receive their accommodations as appropriate. Our elementary students with disabilities who access the general curriculum receive grade-level packets and are supported by their special education teacher via virtual options, once again, such as Zoom, or videotapes, guided lessons, and telephone support for students who don't have access to a device. They work in tandem with the general education teacher, parents, and they also provide accommodations. Now, our students with disabilities who are accessing a modified or adapted curriculum have received packets that are designed for their ability level and teachers are utilizing, once again, virtual and telephone options. For example, we may have a 20-year-old student whose cognitive functioning is similar to that of a five-year-old. His or her packet is designed for that level of functioning. Modifications are already embedded in the packet activities and are specific to each group of students. Individualization of all the packets is then determined by the special education teacher and communicated to the parent. In addition to providing guidance for the parent, the special education teacher may model the skill, have a direct small group instructional lesson through virtual tools. Learning supports and accommodations are provided for the students. And I think it's important to note that they really are based on student needs. Every student doesn't necessarily have the same accommodation. We have provided a link on the elementary and secondary at-home fourth quarter document that was published last week to enable parents of students with disabilities to email my department directly if they have a problem or concern so that we can respond to each situation on a case-by-case basis. So the link is there, they can just click on that link, put in what their concern is, and it is directly sent to my department. Similar to summer planning shared by Dr. Paul, we are planning and looking at options for extended-year services for students with disabilities. So let's talk about what might look different. Some of the packets are the same, some of the work is the same. But as noted earlier, many of our students with disabilities access the general curriculum while others do not. However, those students do have access to accommodations, modifications, and adaptations that make the plan different. In an effort to continue to support the needs of our students, we have also created an instructional support log. So special education teachers are documenting their time spent with students, whether they are engaged in a learning plan packet or engaged in an online learning lesson. So as you can see, there are a wide range of accommodations that can be used when appropriate and some of them include video captioning for our students, read alouds for our students, and access to an interpreter when needed. This is an example of the e-learning log that special education teachers are using to document their work with students. As you can see, it is fairly specific regarding what activity, the time, the accommodation, modification, the individualized support, and the student's response. Special education teachers will submit this log electronically to their supervisors bi-weekly. That will give us the opportunity to even look at which students are we possibly not reaching. We have had some students who have moved and we have not been able to connect with them. I've spoken quite a bit about the accommodations tonight and wanted to share examples of several that are a part of the packet. Each at-home learning packet for the modified or adapted curriculum has an age-appropriate accommodation sheet that the teacher and parent have access to. All teachers have gone back into synergy and re-reviewed their IEPs and have a comprehensive list of each student's individual accommodation so that they can provide the appropriate support and guidance for students and parents. I wanted to share with you a picture of one of our special education teachers providing instruction that she created using a variety of technology tools. She used Screencastify and Smart Notebook. A few other examples of ways that teachers are supporting students may be by recording books and/or passages, small group virtual lessons, Google Classroom, and individualized accommodations, including visual support similar to the one that is listed or shown here. This is an example that came from one of our packets. Students have a math assignment on less than and more than. But for students requiring visual supports, they receive an additional chart that prompts and gives them a visual to assist them. I would like to close out this portion of the presentation by sharing an experience that I had yesterday. I had the pleasure of attending a special education class meeting or a class at Denby High School. It was at 2:00, which on the schedule that Dr. Paul shared, 2:00 is an instructional time. For that particular group of students, that is their physical education time. So the adaptive PE teacher had a lesson and all students, with the exception of one who had a doctor's appointment, were able to log on and participate in physical activity. I participated as well. It was a lot of fun. The speech pathologist was there to engage with students around speech. The classroom teacher and the instructional assistant was there as well. I'm now going to move on to our social emotional supports. We thought it was very important to share with you the social emotional supports that we have available. We have a number of staff members that are involved with the supports for students, families, and staff. These staff members include teachers, professional school counselors, youth development leads, social workers, psychologists, and our licensed clinicians. The supports can really be grouped into five areas. Our professional school counselors and student support specialists have conducted virtual sessions with students to allow students a safe place to talk about their concerns and experiences. Staff are making direct contact with parents and students to discuss concerns regarding needs. Students also have the opportunities to schedule their own appointments with a student support specialist. The student support specialists have continued throughout the pandemic to meet with the students that were previously on their caseload prior to the school closure, but now are providing an opportunity for other students to have a time and a space that works for them. So the student logs on, fills out an appointment time, and then they have a Zoom conference with their student support specialist. There are a number of online resources that we have posted for parents and students with activities and resources for students to support their social and emotional well-being. And the last section is a designated point of contact. We have a point of contact from the mental health team that has been assigned to each school to assist students and families with crisis situations. The contact information is posted on the N N P S learning plan website. Principals also make referrals to the point of contact. In addition, the mental health team is calling a minimum of five students and parents a day to check in on their well-being. The list of contacts has also been shared with some local churches. And additionally, we have a point of contact for working with the city agencies. So we have a point of contact who is working with Human Services Department to include our work with the Community Services Board to get mental health support for our students, CPS, foster care, the court services, and the police department, just to name a few. To wrap up the social emotional supports provided, I am really honored to share some work that has been led by Bridget Adams from School Leadership. Youth Development assembled a team of students, teachers, and student advancement department staff members to brainstorm ways to promote positivity and emotional well-being for students and families. The team proposed that social emotional learning and support resources be added to the at-home resources provided to families. These resources include tips on coping with change and community contacts. We, Bridget added supplemental resources for families that provide ideas for quality family time and those that promote emotional health are posted as well. To promote positivity and provide opportunities to help students, teachers, and staff to stay connected, the Connect webinar or Zoom webinar system was created. There are so many, I'm going to try to just share a few with you. The first one, we had a student host and he, he had a guest, Michael Smith, a national speaker. The second one, Dr. Gerald, was the host with a guest speaker who was also a national speaker, Dr. Philip Campbell. For today for staff, our very own superintendent, Dr. Parker, was the guest. And coming up soon for our staff, we will have a guest, Dr. Janice Underwood, who is the Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer for the State of Virginia. Coming up next for our students is going to be a conversation with student advancement staff members focused on how students are feeling and strategies for coping. And then we have an N N P S Together activity of the day, which provides an activity that is recommended that everyone can do together. The Class of 2020 Task Force, which Dr. Parker has held two forums with seniors to gather their insights about graduation and other issues affecting them as a result of this pandemic. Fifteen students will work together as a part of a task force to help design and implement senior activities for the remainder of the year. And another exciting new project is the Vibe, a student-designed webpage and talk show. So I'm going to leave you with a quote. I won't read it to you, but we have a quote from a student support specialist who had the opportunity to visit a special education classroom and surprised the students. The students were engaged, but they were very appreciative that she spent the hour with them talking about their concerns and they shared with her what was going on. So students are engaged, students know that they have staff that are here to support their social emotional well-being. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wright to talk about at-home technology support.
Well, thank, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Searls Law, Board members and Dr. Parker. I'm actually going to speak on our school office hours. On Wednesday, April 15th, our schools began hosting office hours from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. by appointment only. The school leadership team has collaborated with health services, custodial services, central records, and school security to develop protocols to ensure safe and secure operations. N N P S has followed very clear protocols to implement social distancing and minimize the number of people present during school office hours. Appointments have been scheduled 45 minutes apart. Parents' guardians have also used this time to schedule appointments to begin the registration and withdrawal process or to pick up medications or medical equipment. Note, our Wednesday office hours have been for essential business only and have not been used for teacher workdays, classroom cleanup days, or an opportunity to retrieve non-essential items from classrooms or lockers. In the coming weeks, after restrictions have been lifted, we will implement a schedule for staff and students to return to the building and to complete such tasks. And to give you an idea of who reports on Wednesdays, we have an administrator, which could be the principal or assistant principal. In addition, we have asked staff members present to ensure the following functions are executed. Customer service, which could be answering phones and emails, sorting mail, scheduling appointments, student registration, withdrawal, financial transactions, bookkeeping, medication pickup, as I mentioned, and school counseling for secondary schools only to assist with the registration process, including questions about course schedules and graduation requirements. Our custodians are working split shifts on Wednesdays and Thursdays. In addition, an assigned security officer and TSS will report every Wednesday to every school to provide assistance with the office hours. At this time, we can answer any questions you may have regarding our COVID-19 update this season. Thank you for your patience. We also have our website links here on the screen for you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a few questions.
Okay, Mr. Brown. You have the floor.
All right, so just going back to the Wi-Fi distribution and device. All right, so just going back to the Wi-Fi distribution and devices. Can we get an estimate or an update at some point in the future? What percentage of our sixth through 12th graders have, we've confirmed they either have a device in the home or they have access to Wi-Fi? So just in terms of is it 99%, then we're working with another additional 10 or so students or, you know, just getting an idea of where we stand in those parts? And then in terms of attendance and the percentage of kids doing online login? So in relation to attendance that we're tracking this year through the end of the school year, are we doing attendance based upon when a child logs in online or is it going to be based upon receiving the packets? So essentially, how are we tracking attendance and tracking the truancy rate for our students?
Mr. Brown, under these conditions, we do not have a technically defined truancy rate for student participation because the work that is expected to be turned in will be given the grades associated with TI or NT. So the teachers are asked to, one, notify the administration if there are any students who are not engaging with them, whether it's a virtual class, if there is a student who's not participating, because that is how we're identifying students who may not have, who may have technology issues. Also, from the elementary level, you know, since students, since it's just packet distribution, conferencing, and pickup, it's hard to hold attendance under those certain circumstances. So under these circumstances, we're not necessarily taking daily attendance. It's about getting workout opportunities for instruction and to give students feedback on their work. Regarding the percentage, I think we have done a survey in the past regarding that. Mr., actually, Chris will answer that question regarding the technology access.
Hello, Mr. Brown. What we did last year in a survey of our students, we found in the responses that about 6% reported not having some type of internet access at home. And I think I've shared that in conversations with you in the past. As we started issuing devices to students after the school closure and surveying them about what their needs were, we found that about 15% of the students who needed a Chromebook also reported needing some type of hotspot from us. So moving forward, we think that that is the number that we're going to go with, is that the estimate is going to be about 15% of our students. As we do these kind of initiatives, are going to probably need some kind of assistance with internet access.
And currently, we have enough Chromebooks and hotspots to pass out for 15%? Or are we, is that a dangerously high level?
No, sorry, I wouldn't say dangerously high. What we're doing now, and I think we've shared this with some folks, is that we're having encouraging families to contact their secondary school students. Their families contact the principal, and then the principal puts the student on a waiting list. And also, on that waiting list, they tell us what they need. Do they need a Chromebook? Do they need a hotspot? Do they need both? And so far, we've been able to keep up with that number. I think a couple of folks have already shared some of those numbers this evening. And we're also moving towards distributing. We've done several large-scale distributions, and now we've moved towards distributing devices at the schools that the students attend. So we'll be doing that during Wednesday office hours by appointment only.
Any other questions? Dr. Best?
Yes, I have a question. It's kind of follow-up to Mr. Brown's questions regarding attendance. Is there any follow-up? If you find out, if a teacher, you said you have teachers to let you know if students are not logging in, is there any follow-up and what is procedure and who's responsible for following up? And we know that work is not graded as well, but if there's even elementary students that are not making any type of contact with the teacher, is that noted somewhere and is any type of follow-up being done to see possibly where that student is, possibly why?
Dr. Best, I'll start off. If Dr. Poe wants to chime in, he's welcome to do so. That's one of the reasons why we started the Wednesday hours was to make sure that we have some staff footprint in our school communities on a weekly basis. And our school counseling program is up and running to ensure that if we are made aware, and our school social workers are also contacting and working with students on a caseload as well. So if we are made aware that a student is not engaged with instruction, those are the resources that we're utilizing to try to identify whether there's a need in the home, whether there's some level of crisis or trauma taking place in the home. But in every different household, it's going to be different. Sometimes it's just a matter of, I think we received an email today where it just was the parent was not available to have the kid online accessing the teacher at that time. So there's going to be some communication between the teacher, our school counselors, and administration to try to ensure that we keep as many kids engaged during this crisis as possible with their instructional program. But that's what we're relying on at this particular point. Our clinically licensed social workers maintain a caseload, so they are contacting those students. I think Dr. Mitchell can confirm weekly, if I'm correct, to see how those students are doing and whether they're engaged with instruction, as well as some of our other students who are on caseloads for various reasons.
And if I could just add, Dr. Parker, you hit pretty much everything, but I did want to add that this coming up week at senior staff and then at the principal packet memo on Thursday, we're going to send out an internal survey to our teachers to see. And it's going to be rostered, it's going to be easy point and click. It's going to give them their student roster, ask them if they've heard from a student, if they're getting work from a student. And it's also going to ask them, to go back to Mr. Brown's question, you know, do you know, do they have an internet access? Yes, no, or I don't know? So we can get even further down into the weeds to know exactly what we have going on. But that'll be going out next week to do that. And then, Dr. Best, we're also with our specialists, our interventionalists, everybody that we can get on task to reach out to those students. We're doing everything we possibly can, including a few that have reached out to us saying that they just have troubles even getting out or don't want to get out to get the packets. We've started mailing some packets on a small scale to those who have a high need that we're trying to respond to as much as we can.
Ms. Searls Law?
So, Mr. Jenkins, I'm wondering here, is our biggest issue going to be not identifying the students or not having the devices when we do identify the students? How are we looking in terms of having them on hand?
I think we're in very good shape so far with some of the technology purchases that we've made. We've been able to identify some devices in the schools that we can continue to issue as principals and families identify their needs. I think we're in very good shape. The big challenge becomes the cost of the Wi-Fi hotspots. You know, it's a very expensive endeavor. We're looking at some other long-term solutions, but as a stopgap measure, we have purchased several hundred hotspots, and we're in competition with a lot of other school districts, which are finding that those hotspots are backordered sometimes until May. We were very fortunate to be able to purchase. We placed an order very early with Verizon, and we're able to get 300 in and have since issued all of those to the students. So we have a great team over in the technology department, and they're staying on top of it and doing the best they can to make sure that our students have everything they need.
We definitely appreciate your guidance and your work through that process. My other question has to go towards the Federal CARES Act. So are there limits on when or how that money can be, not how it can be used, but duration? So is it till the end of this school year? Or is it through the needs of the pandemic, the challenges that the pandemic have caused? When, how long can we use that $9 million? How long can we hold on to it to use it for these needs?
Well, Ms. Searls Law, we really haven't been given all the rules yet for the money.
Okay.
But we will hopefully find that out next week from the state, and then we'll figure that out. My guess is, since it's federal money, it may be on a federal timeline. But I rather doubt that they'll expect us to use all of that by the end of this federal cycle. So the state has also set aside some of the federal timelines for some of our other federal grant money. Since we're not in session currently, they have suspended some of the timelines as well as some of the carryforward limits that go along with some of our federal funding. So I expect that they'll do something that's reasonable to give us plenty of time to spend it. And as I mentioned, in addition to next year's budget being affected, it looks like 22's budget will be affected as well.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I expect that it may be, we may be allowed to use it over both cycles. And perhaps we could maybe hope for more since I think that our loss will be greater than what we think we're going to get from the CARES Act currently.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Best?
I do have another question, and this one, I think, is for Dr. Mitchell. Regarding the modification in the learning packets, is that since the second set of learning packets have been distributed? And the reason why I ask is because myself, I'm sure a couple of other board members have received emails regarding the learning packet being the same for every student.
No, that has not been since then. What I think those parents who may have contacted you, their students may be accessing the general curriculum, so they should have the same packet as the students who are sitting in their third grade class. So they might be in a co-teaching class, so they would still get the third grade packet. But then the special education teacher should be working with the family to make those modifications. For example, if Mr. Brown is supposed to read the entire five passages, Lisa Searls Law might need to read two of those passages. And the teacher really should be working, not only with the general education teacher, but also with the parent so that the parent knows that that is the case. But you are correct in that the second packet, we added a modification sheet so that not only should the teacher be telling the parent, but it is right there for the parent to know as well. So yes, we did add that since the second one. And we hope that we're just going to get better and better at it. You're welcome.
Are there any more questions? Mr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that we're not planning on this pandemic lasting past the summer. Listening to the news, but what measures are we taking to take place to be proactive in case this pandemic is going on in September, October still? Will all of our children have access to learn at home as well?
Well, I'll start on that question. Obviously, we're looking at technology purchases, and that's a possibility with the stimulus package that will be made available. There's going to be obviously some competition between school divisions to access devices. So we've kind of got an early jump on increasing our inventory. We've also, as we rolled out the continuity of learning plan, in particular at elementary, you can see that we've already started planning for additional, for a curriculum from the fourth quarter to be introduced in the fall at the initial, at the student's next grade level in terms of elementary. Because we know there's a break in the continuity of learning for this year, we want to make sure that students are still exposed to the curriculum from the fourth quarter in the fall of next year as well, but also reinforcing and providing the necessary instruction for students to reach some level of mastery for what they were responsible for learning this year when instruction was taking place. So that plan takes us into next year, and it's just a matter now as far as what timeline the virus will impact the start of the school year. We're also planning for reinforced instruction over the summer. We're looking at what kind of summer model will need to take place, whether we're able to meet physically or virtually. So our plans are to start preparing for, not for life after this crisis is over with and when we need to know what will instruction look like and how will we ensure that our students are getting an upper hand on their learning.
Ms. Aldra, do you have a question?
Yes, Mary Lou, just wanted to find out, in terms of the monies, are we spending or are things frozen at this time as far as expenses? And also with Title I budgets, what's going to happen with that? Is that something that will be impacted as well?
Well, the Title I money has been, the restrictions on that have been lifted as some of the other federal funds have. So we'll be given a little more time to spend that. And the carryforwards, as I mentioned, have been, restrictions have been lifted as well. With regard to the current year, we are, of course, going to watch our spending because of the sales tax drop that we expect to see. Of course, we do still have some things that we need to get done. You're going to hear later this evening an update on the Aviation Academy. And we have requested some assistance on that funding from the city, but we don't have a commitment yet. We still have to get that done. So we've got to provide for that. As Dr. Parker mentioned, we have made some technology purchases to make sure that we've positioned our secondary students at least to be able to access learning from home. And so we expect by sometime this summer, assuming that the vending gods are good to us, that we'll have Chromebook devices for all six to 12 students. Whether or not we'll be able to have enough devices for them to access the internet, that is a different issue, and we are working on that. Chris and his staff have some ideas, and they're working a pilot on that to see if we can extend our network into some of the neighborhoods. So we'll see how that pans out, but at least they should have devices. But yes, we are going to have, it's going to be very, always this time of year, it's a very careful time of year to make sure that our funding and our expenditures match up at the end. We don't usually have the situation with sales tax that we're going to have to watch. We're going to watch that very carefully. We're doing an abundance of planning so that we can make the important things happen. You know, we also have some savings, which if you saw in your financial report for this evening, we've identified some of those, so we aren't rolling buses, so we're not buying fuel. We aren't paying overtime to certain staff members that otherwise would be getting overtime. We've got all of our buildings at setback, and so our heating and cooling costs are less than otherwise they would be. Bust parts we're not buying. So we are going to see some reduction in some cost as well. So we're identifying all of those and trying to make it all at the end. It'll be okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There being none, thank you for that great report. And we're going to move the agenda on to 5.02, Human Resource Retention Recruitment Updates.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is Stephanie Hots, and I'm really excited to be here with you this afternoon. Michelle is getting the presentation together. Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, Dr. Parker, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chairman Searls Law, and Board Members. This evening, I'm going to share an update regarding recruitment and staffing work in Newport News Public Schools. We will talk briefly about the staffing for our current school year. We'll talk about the work that needs to be done to prepare for the 2021 school year and how that looks different in our current work environment. And finally, I'll provide a short update on the impact of COVID-19 on our staff. To remind you, these are our recruiting priorities for our current school year and will remain as our priorities as we move to the 2021 school year. We continue to work to hire the best of the best. We continue to work on the diversity of our teaching staff. We made some strides with our minority hiring with this year's new hires. We increased from 37% minority hires in 1819 to 44% minority hires for the 1920 school year. As the teacher shortage continues to get worse, our hard-to-fill areas continue to grow, but we will continue to work on filling those. And although we did not fill all of our vacancies this school year, we continue to strive towards that goal for the coming year. We started the school year with 15 classroom vacancies on the first day of school. Unfortunately, for the first time in over a decade that I've been working with staffing, the number of students who arrived in our schools was higher than we anticipated. This resulted in us increasing the number of classrooms, especially in our elementary schools, where we work to meet K-3 class size reduction levels. This, along with the increased needs of our special education students, resulted in us adding many new teacher positions to our schools. Unfortunately, licensed teachers were not available to fill all of these new positions. Unfortunately, licensed teachers were not available to fill all of these new positions, and we had to use long-term substitutes for those roles. You can see from the data that with those additional positions, along with our normal attrition, we left on March the 13th with a number of vacancies, which is very unusual for us. So now, as we work on hiring for 2020, 2021, we're looking at trends to assist us with our planning. At this point, we are not seeing any increases over the past few years in our resignations or retirements. Information from our intent process has indicated similar, if not slightly lower rates of intense not to return. We have at this point had less retirements and several requests to rescind resignations because of the impact of COVID-19. So we predict that our turnover rate will be lower than this past year. Dr. Parker shared this data with you and City Council back in February. The data demonstrates the impact of the teacher shortage and the importance of staying competitive with our salaries. You can see that the number of teachers that we lost to other school divisions was always less than the number that we hired from other school divisions until this past year. So it appears that we've lost our advantage in hiring experienced teachers who typically make up at least 50% of our new hires each year. So you may be wondering, how are we going to be able to hire and be ready to start the 2020, 2021 school year? First of all, the entire HR staff is working full-time from home. We are being responsive to staff regarding their employment and benefits needs, as well as recruiting and hiring staff. Let's look at how our recruiting plans have changed because of our new work environment. We still use our expert interview teams to hire for the division. However, now they are being conducted virtually. We started about five years ago with centralized interview teams, which are composed of principals, curriculum and development staff, and HR staff. Employment offers are made for the division, and then assignments to schools are then determined by the principals based on best fit. The over 20 recruiting trips that have been planned to colleges and universities this spring were all canceled. Instead, we have begun participating in virtual job fairs that are sponsored by other organizations. Education Weekly, American Association of Education, and the University of North Carolina are three that we have just recently participated in. The three recruiting events that we had planned are now going to be done virtually as well. We have purchased software so that we can host our own virtual job fairs. We anticipate completing implementation by the end of the month and then hosting our first event the first week of May. The software will also add a chat box feature to our HR webpage, where potential candidates will have the ability to chat with one of our HR staff members during office hours. When we are not online, there's an artificial intelligence component that will respond for us so that we can follow up later. We will also have the ability to communicate via text messaging with candidates. Our recruiting tools that we've used have included different hiring sites, such as Teacher to Teacher and Indeed and Career Builders. We've also used social media and website tools such as LinkedIn, Facebook, our own website and university websites. And we've had a variety of media advertising that we have used, such as radio, online news sources, as well as press releases. We've now expanded these tools. Our advertising now includes TV commercials. We are also accessing a new technology called retargeting. This sends our recruiting ads to anyone online looking at educational jobs on sites like Indeed, as well as when anyone does general internet job searches. We have also added to our functionality with LinkedIn. This allows us to use search functions and the ability to send email blasts to those groups. And Handshake, which is a career search tool that university, university career centers have been using without a lot of success up until COVID-19 hit, well now Handshake is the major tool available to college students, and we are making our presence known on Handshake. And of course, we will continue with the incentives that we are providing to candidates. That includes our hard-to-fill incentives, early offer incentives, the STEM state incentives that are available, our relocation reimbursements, and of course, opportunities through summer employment and the Jump Start program that provides funding for provisioning licensed teachers to earn their full license. I do want to share a couple of new initiatives for this coming year, which are part of what we call our Grow Our Own program. Or I've also used the term future teacher programs. In addition to the multiple programs we have with our local universities, we work with our current staff that are not teachers, which primarily includes our instructional assistants, and we work with them to make them teachers. We began last summer with our first special education cohort. We had 17 instructional assistants and long-term substitutes to make required, to take, excuse me, require special education coursework with Old Dominion that is needed to qualify for their provisional license in special education. This group has worked hard in their classrooms with the support and the assistance of their principals and special education department. They are accessing our Jump Start program for provisioned licensed teachers in order to earn their full Virginia license. We have two new programs that we're beginning in the spring, or working on this spring. One is the Newport News Public Schools Career Switcher Program in partnership with Old Dominion University. We will have up to 20 staff members earn their career switcher license in time to become teachers for the 2021 school year. And finally, we are on the development stage of a program that will target our current employees and their efforts to become elementary teachers. This is a little bit of a more difficult program because the license requirements for elementary teachers is much more difficult to meet if you're not in a traditional program, but we're going to figure it out and help our staff become elementary teachers. We will continue to increase the number of teacher residents in Newport News Public Schools. As a reminder, teachers and residents are paid co-teaching internships guided by a highly skilled teacher coach while completing required coursework with a partner university. This program prepares highly qualified teachers to serve in critical shortage areas. We have partnered with Old Dominion University and Christopher Newport University to create these programs. Currently, we are in our third year of having a resident program, and that program has grown from only five residents the first year to 10 this year. And we are budgeted for next year to have a total of 16 residents for the 2021 school year. And to kind of tie things up, I'm going to share a little bit about the communication and the work that we're doing with our staff during the pandemic. First of all, since March 13th, the Human Resources Department has provided multiple communications with staff regarding the impact of the governor's orders related to COVID-19. Our workforce is fortunate during this difficult time that Newport News Public Schools has been able to keep their contracted employees working and therefore pay during the school closure. As we either work from home or continue the critical functions of the school division at our sites, Human Resources has communicated and then worked with employees that have situations that interfere with their work responsibilities. The Family First Act, as well as the expanded FMLA Act have provided us, in addition to Newport News Public Schools generous leave policies, ways to provide for our employees and their individual situations. We have also provided several communications to staff around wellness and their benefits, and we'll continue those efforts as we move forward. We are all dealing with new stresses with the stay-at-home order, and we are trying to assist with ideas and resources to our staff as they figure out how to adapt to this new normal. The school closures have caused some unique challenges as it relates to the requirements of professional instructional staff. A communication is also scheduled to go out this week, which will address some of the concerns that our instructional staff have regarding licensure renewals and evaluations that are both required for this, required by the state. Staff may access information on our website, and that is listed there for you, as well as make contact through two email addresses, askHR and ask and askbenefits. Also provided there is a phone number where we have voicemail capability in order for our employees to be able to reach us and for us to respond as quickly as possible to their needs. So that's my quick update this evening, and so I would be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Okay, Dr. Bass?
Thank you. I have a question regarding residency, career switcher, and regarding you spoke about increasing diversity amongst the teachers. Are you cultivating relationships with Hampton University and Norfolk State University to bring them onboard to participate in programs like that?
Yes, ma'am, we are. We do a lot of both Norfolk State and Hampton University. In fact, we go to their campus to actually conduct interviews with their student teachers every year, in addition to providing staff and other professionals to speak at practical meetings and classwork, as well as continue to look at, at what we can do collaboratively in terms of programs like possibly the residency or some of the other programs we have. But yes, ma'am, we are in constant contact with both of those universities.
Ms. Aldra?
Yes, wanted to find out, is it possible to start recruitment at high school? I know that might sound a little bit absurd, but I wonder if we can, I mean, is that a consideration? Is that something that we've thought about? You know, and I shouldn't use the word absurd. I think it's, it's creative if we can.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Currently, we have a very strong internship program at all of our high schools, and one of the areas in which a large number of our students participate in an internship is those who want to be teachers. I know when I was at Woodside High School, we had a lot of students who, you know, walked right down, right over to Greenwood and spent time during their internship there, and we have lots of situations like that. We are also working on a Teachers for Tomorrow course. The high school principals are working with me and of course, curriculum and development to look at how do we get that credit-bearing course back into popularity, I guess. We had had something similar to it many years ago and just kind of fell out of favor with kids, and that's a lot how it works in high schools. But now pushing to do that back in our high schools, since we have such a strong internship program now, we're pretty confident this is the key time to go ahead and, and make that push. And our high school program principals have been very supportive of the work we've begun there. We're just not there quite yet, but that isn't our intention. A lot of those programs can result in dual enrollment and college credit, as well as some other, and then they could very well feed into some of the residency programs that we already have established. So, yeah, we work really hard with our own students to keep them connected. A lot of them work in Spark in the summertime, so it's a way that we stay connected with them and then very quickly try to connect them back to full-time employment when they finish school.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to say it was a very informative report, going back to the previous slides where you included the recruitment and retention rates. I know that that's something that I've asked about previously, and to have multiple years included, that was very helpful. And then as well, to see the number of resignations and retirements and the percentages, being able to see the trend there, that was very helpful for me to give me context as to where we are right now. So I just wanted to say that was very informative. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? There being none, thank you for that report.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will continue with the agenda, 5.03 Aviation Academy Update. And I believe Mr. Beverly?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Co-Chairman, Board Members, and Dr. Parker. I trust everybody is staying safe and well. I'm going to give you an Aviation Academy relocation update. First, what I wanted to do is talk about, I know we have a new board member since we met last at a work session prior to Christmas. So this, Aldra, this is kind of for you. Why are we doing this? So most of you remember, the old terminal was built back in 1949. And so she's getting some age on her. Due to the age, we've had several HVAC problems through the past couple of years. We've, we spent a little over a quarter of a million dollars last year just trying to maintain the space. If you'll remember, they lost a major HVAC air handler unit on the people's side back in the spring going into summer of 19. And this required a lot of the area that we leased to lose HVAC or climate control. So in light of that, we ended up having to purchase portable HVAC units to provide climate control for those areas. The roof system is majorly deteriorated. The, it's causing interior structural damage. Just last year, before going into the winter timeframe, we had a health inspection and the kitchen exhaust system failed compliance. So we had to secure cooking in the kitchen area to start, CNS had to start brown bagging lunches in. And to kind of cap that off, the Peninsula Airport Commission informed us that they cannot be in a negative lease. And so what that meant was is they were unable to sign a lease with us, so we don't have a lease there, and they want us out by June 30th. So that's what we are committed to trying to meet, the deadline. Next slide there, please. So what have we accomplished since we met at the work session, work session back in November? We presented y'all with a conceptual design plan. That plan has pretty much held true. We finalized four plans, and we've approved all of those. I would like to thank Dr. Blow and Dr. Smith for their major role in making this happen, working with their staff. We've, we've ensured that everything that they've had, or they had at the existing Aviation Academy, they will have at the new facility in the back of Denby High School. So that's great. Purchase orders have been made. Centennial Contractors will be the general contractor doing the major portion of the work. And Vanguard Modular will be the general contractor for providing the learning colleges out back. So all this comes with a cost. The eight-classroom modular is $533,000. And I'm going to get into that in just a little bit and show you what that includes in another slide, but we'll just kind of cruise through this. And as you can see, I won't sit here and read them all off to you, but those are the figures. And when we first talked about this back in November, we had kind of predicted that it was going to be somewhere between 1.5, 1.7 million, and right now it's coming in about 1.636. So we're kind of in line with what we thought it was going to cost, and so everything is going according as planned right now. I believe Dr. Parker has been working with the city and requesting some funds to try to help with the project, but I don't believe there's been any response or commitment as of yet with that. With that said, we'll move on. And so what you're looking at is an aerial view of the back of Denby High School. And you can see that the eight-classroom modular unit setting there. What we'll have is a canopy that kind of comes from that inside corner back where the cafeteria is, and it will run up to this left-hand side of the modular building. And then you'll still have the canopy that runs from the back of the new aviation wing that will carry out to the ROTC trailers and also access the eight-classroom modular. So with the price of the modular, includes the demolition of the existing trailers and canopy, all the site work, new canopies and walkways will go in, like I said, from the back of the cafeteria so that you can traverse back and forth from the left-hand side looking at your screen. That includes fire and security infrastructure, and they'll get all new TVs. So the folks moving out there should be pretty excited. They'll have a, you know, all-new digs. And so moving on. So this is basically a floor plan of Denby High School. The aviation program will be moving into the northeast corner of the facility. You can, we've got it highlighted in red there. And that encompasses about 1,600 or 16,167 square feet. So it is within 100 square feet, I believe, of, in other words, what they So it is within a hundred square feet, I believe, of, in other words, what they had at the Aviation Academy, the current Aviation Academy. So like I said, working with Dr. Blow and Dr. Smith, we've been able to just take everything from there and move that program to there. We've accounted for every. Classroom, every program and all functionalities are there. So moving on, you can see. This is another floor plan that kind of gives you a better view. Phase one will be the wind tunnel area. That that has its challenges. As you can tell, it's a small area and look at what it's going to cost. A lot of that is due to the foundation work that's got to be done to support the wind tunnel, the new roof system. Kind of find out that the building is on screw piles and graveings. So that is, that's an expensive undertaking, but that's phase one. They started working on that this past week. And so everything is on target. We have talked with Centennial and we've talked about the COVID nineteen issues. They are providing a COVID nineteen plan for the construction workers that they have working. And they also do not see any delays in construction at this time. However, you know, the governor could could make a change in that, but right now there's no, no issues with construction. So phase one will consist of the wind tunnel. As you can see, there will be an air compressor room out back. And there'll be a new roof and that is the area where the carpenter shop used to have their dust collector and everything around back. And so looking at the other areas, phase two. And as you can see, that includes all the classrooms, the airframe lab, which the the kids are going to be excited when they come back to this. It's a, it's much nicer than than the one at the airport was. It's bigger. Everything will be located in the ceiling. You'll just reach up, pull down, new matics, pull down electricity. You'll have everything right at your workstation. So. It's really going to be nice. The flight simulator through the wind tunnel and the reception area, I've got a slide at the very end, but it will show you, it just conveys how. Transparent that the facility is going to be. But this, this shows you everything that's going to be done. That's phase two. So moving right along, projected timelines. As I said, we started phase one construction this past, this week. We plan to start phase two on the twenty seventh. We're going to hire or we're going to solicit for an RFP to hire a moving company to move Aviation Academy. There's some. Technical things that need to happen with the wind tunnel. It needs to be disassembled. As you know, it's a certified wind tunnel at this time. So when we get it back in and it's reinstalled, we want it to be certified there as well. So, so we don't want to take anything away from instruction or the capabilities. Demo and the cottages will start around May first. The start of Aviation Academy is projected to start June fifteenth. That allows two weeks to move. And our plan is to turn the Aviation Academy back over to the pack on June thirtieth, as we were asked to do. With a completion date of August third for the Aviation Academy. And I kind of would like to throw in there that, you know. Some of you may be thinking, well, we're only gaining three months, three weeks, and we're starting a month and a half early. A lot of that is due to the foundation work that needs to be done. And, and just there, there, there is a curve in there in case there's issues with construction. You know, as you know, none of us know what the future kind of holds right this second. So. So with that, we'll move on to there. That is hopefully a very close rendition of what you'll see. When, when you walk into the aviation area off the back main hallway. And as you can see, looking at this. Hold on just a second. I've got things popping up on my screen. As you can see, walking in. The transparency, what you're looking at is you're looking at the, the secretary station and then through that you're looking at the flight simulator. And if you look in the back of that, all the way to the back, what you're looking at there, you just can't see it because it's dark, but you're looking inside the wind tunnel. So I mean, it's very transparent through there. You can see some mockups of cutaway jet engines over to your right. So. It's, it's going to be exciting. I think the, the, the students should, should love it. I think the parents should be very happy. It's going to be better. They're moving into a healthier building. It's all going to be brand new back there, except for a few things that we just couldn't do to, to cut down on cost. There, there is one thing we're going to do that nobody knows is if you look at the floor, when you come into the main. Walkway of the Aviation Academy, the floor is going to look like a runway. And I thought that was just a great touch. And so, you know, color doesn't cost anymore. So anyway. That's it for my update. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Brown.
Yes, thank you for that update. That's great. Definitely looks like a much nicer build, you know, much nicer facility than what we currently have. The one question is regards to the learning cottages. So it looks like we're going to lose some learning cottages. And with that, you know, what is the net effect on Demby High School in terms of classroom spaces? So is it? No concern for losing those learning cottages and, and how many learning cottages will we have left? You know, once these, once these ones are gone.
Good question. We're taking out two. One of them is being used by the ROTC for clothing, uniform storage, boot storage, things of that nature. So. You're really losing nothing. Actually, if you'll look at, Michelle, if you'll go back to the overview, the aerial view of the trailers. The, the bottom right hand trailer is actually split in half. Dr. Blow thought that would be a great thing to kind of split it up and it provides two smaller spaces. They're, they're all climate controlled, which has been an issue with where ROTC has been storing their uniforms. So that, that kind of kills two birds with one stone and she'll actually have a smaller area for breakout for, you know, any kind of special program that she may want to use. So there, we're not losing anything. The photograph, the, the photography class will be relocating and great news there. They're getting new digital software. They're kind of. Moving up into to, you know, today's technology. It was the old darkroom kind of thing and everybody's pretty excited about that. So. It's, it's so far, it's been a win win for everybody that goes to Demby, I think. I realize you've lost the view of a, of an, of airplanes landing, but except for that one feature. Everything else is much better.
All right. Thank you.
John, Mr. Ely, did I see your hand up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to say, wait, that was amazing presentation. I'm excited for it to open. I want to go back to school soccer with part of the aviation program. I'm sure. Being in a nicer facility, up to date modern, we're going to attract so many kids. We already attract so many kids now with the Aviation Academy. I think we're going to probably double or triple that number once they see that nice facility. So thank you to your team, the principal of Demby High School for making that continue to happen for our kids in Newport News.
Well, thank you. I, I, I agree. And Dr. Blow agrees. I think as people get to see this and they start seeing people going and doing these things, it's, it's going to become a kind of a virus and they're going to want to do it too. I mean, to be able to walk through and see people on flight simulators flying airplanes, I. I would have loved to have had that when I went to school. Would have been amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to close out this presentation just by just mentioning to those parents who are listening, who have current Aviation. Academy students. We met earlier this year and we have some very good comments and feedback from our parents. Who were interested in eventually expanding the curriculum, more opportunities with that aviation program. We have not taken those things off the table. What we really wanted to do is to make sure that we can provide, continue the promise of providing a quality education. For not only the current Aviation Academy students, but those who are coming in this year and, and the next few years. As we continue to look at better options for, for that program and hopefully doing some innovative things in the future. So. More to come, as I mentioned to the parents when we met earlier this year and the faculty. Sometimes a problem can become an opportunity. And we will still continue to look at the opportunity that we'll have to expand programs with the aviation program. And eventually, hopefully even look at another offsite location. So those conversations are still being had. We just want to assure our parents is. That your feedback and your concerns were, were, were taken very seriously when we met. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make sure I mention that to our parents out there.
Thank you. With that, I believe there's no more questions. There being that, we will move the agenda. Five point oh four, your attendance report, five point oh five, membership report and five point oh six, construction report. And those three reports were part of your package. If there's no questions on those reports, we will move on to item. Five point oh seven, comments by our superintendent, Dr. Parker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all of our board members for your leadership over this, over this time that we've had to make many adjustments to our instructional programs. I want to. Just one, give a shout out to our, to the leadership of the school division, our school board members, our central office leadership and our school leaders. And our operational lead, operations departments for the great work that and teamwork that we've exhibited over the past few weeks. Many of the things we've accomplished have been done. Behind the scenes with a lot of dialogue and a lot of discussion. And I really appreciate the support of my leadership as we move forward into uncharted territory. We have some celebrations tonight. I'd like to go ahead and share some good things going on in the division in my remarks. In particular, two of our instructional programs have been highlighted by the Virginia School Board Association's annual showcase for, for success directory. Every year, the Virginia School Board Association puts out a directory on the, on best practices around the state. And highlights specific programs by school divisions that are in both innovative and impactful for student success. Newport News Public Schools is one of forty four school divisions from across the state that has had programs featured in the directory, which focuses on innovative programs. And support for the profile of a Virginia graduate. The directory this year features our programs, the ISTEM program. Which supports the application and integration of authentic literacy and two of our STEM disciplines. And two or more STEM disciplines, which result in students identifying and solving real world problems. Many of our students' ISTEM projects are highlighted at the annual STEM Community Day event. Held in participation with Christopher Newport University. The Student Assist Program, the second program, is also featured in this year's showcase. This Student Help Desk Program gives students the opportunity to be involved in technology support and integration initiatives. Assist student partners with the, with their school's computer technology support team to help with repairs and maintenance. Encourage peers to infuse technology into their projects and enrich technology personality of the, of the school. So students gain on the job experience through the help desk by completing network maintenance and desktop troubleshooting. So congratulations to our students and our teachers for these two important programs. In particular, I'd like to give a shout out to our STEM supervisor. Tammy Byron and CTE Supervisor Tonette Outland for these wonderful programs. I extend my thanks to the community staff and our advocates for their support of our budget development process this year. Our goal is to create a clear and transparent budget, and I think that we have done that again this, this year with this budget cycle. I'd also like to thank our city manager for recommending full funding of the school division's approved budget this year. We know it's challenging times, but I think the level of collegiality, support and communication between our city leadership and our school division leadership. Was definitely a step above recent years. And I'd like to definitely thank our mayor, our city manager and our city council for their, for their support of, of, of our efforts. We will continue to work in collaboration with our city leaders to ensure that we have the financial resources for our students to graduate college, career and citizen ready. We also want to give a thanks to our, the organization Community Nights. The Community Nights has awarded Newport News Public Schools with two thousand dollars from its COVID nineteen relief fund. To buy additional Wi-Fi hotspots for middle and high school students in support of at home learning. It's great when a nonprofit in our community steps up during a time of crisis and provides resources that we need, targeted resources. Specific to the needs of our students. So we'd like to really thank the Community Nights organization for their support of Newport News Public Schools. This month is National Autism Awareness Month and through many of our local activities, though many of our local activities cannot be held. We are working with our partners to increase understanding and acceptance and foster the support of children and adults with autism. This school division has a wide range of resources to support and advanced students. I thank all of our dedicated staff who serve and work with students with autism. Your work matters and in the lives of our students and we thank you for your support. April is also the month of the military child and tomorrow is Purple Up Day across Virginia. So if you have some purple pajamas or a purple shirt in your next Zoom meeting or whatever, whatever, throw in some purple tomorrow and support the month of the military child. To show our support of military children and families, join me to wear purple, snap a quick selfie or a family shot and post your photos on social media and tag us. To be included in a Facebook photo album tomorrow evening. And finally, I invite our families, students and staff to participate in our next Facebook Live event, which will be held on Thursday, April thirtieth from six thirty to seven thirty. We had nearly two thousand, if I correct, viewers on our first Facebook Live event. We'd like to break that number and encourage everyone to, to tune in. Or again, on Thursday, April thirtieth from six thirty to seven thirty for the school division's next Facebook Live event. You should join, see members of my, myself and members of our leadership team as well as representation from our school board on that Facebook Live event. We always look forward to hearing from you. So any questions, post your questions and comments on our Facebook page during the live event. And this session will be aired also by Newport News Public School TV, Television Channel Cox forty seven and Verizon Channel seventeen. And on our, and online at www dot N N P S T V dot com. So that information will be posted as well. So please tune in next week. We look forward to seeing you. And that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. We're going to continue with our agenda. Item number six, matters by the school board. And I believe we still have our student representative, Mr. Gore. You are up.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Again.
Okay. So I wanted to start off by saying that it's a horrendous time for all of us. While seniors aren't able to go to prom or hang out with their friends and enjoy the last moments together, juniors aren't able to complete their. SAT or ACT testing. And the elementary and middle school students are of course not able to enjoy the company of their friends. However, at the same time, we're able to see this sort of resiliency develop because with. Dr. Parker and other school board members, we are all doing Zoom calls and we're all talking to each other and able to get through this as a community. So through that, I believe that we're able to once again develop a relationship between the school board members and the students. And also, we're also able to kind of confide in them as well. Throughout this whole entire ordeal, we were able to get, talk to them twice, I believe. And it was mostly about how are we going to move forward? How are we going to do graduation? Do we want a graduation in the summer or the winter? And through that, of course, we had different perspectives. Across all of the students, but at the same time, it was the willingness to cooperate and the willingness to be open to all ideas. And overall, I believe that that was really exciting because I wasn't, I did not expect for all of us to come together and to. To kind of like reach a resolution. And of course, we haven't yet, but I believe that it will be coming sooner or later. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. Next, we'll start with our school board members. Mrs. Alger. You're up.
Yes, thank you. Being that it's National Student Leadership Week, I, I just want to give a big shout out to the different. to the different high schools that are doing great things as far as building spirit. And I think it's beyond what we call right brick and mortar. Just to give some examples, for example, Menchville is going to have a virtual talent show. Is that not amazing? I think that's so awesome. And Warwick Raiders, yay Raiders! They have a choir, and you have to see on social media the clip, the singing that is going on. I mean, it's so inspirational. So I want to say thank you to all of the folks that are building school spirit virtually. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alger. Dr. Bass.
Thank you. I'll try to be very brief. I won't repeat what anyone has said as far as the different months and activities that we're celebrating. I would have liked to add child abuse prevention is celebrated during the month of April. So I would just encourage everyone to make sure that we are looking out and supporting all of the children that are in our village. One of the most difficult things in education is to help children to make connections to what they are learning. And although we're not in school and we're under this pandemic, it's a ripe opportunity for continued learning. When we talk about where this virus began, it began in China. We're looking at geography, we're looking at science, it moved on to Europe, just the history. When we look at the numbers, how the cases are so quickly multiplying, we talk about math. So I'm encouraging every family, as I'm doing with my family, to not ponder on the sadness, because it is a lot of sadness associated with it. But it's also an opportunity for continued learning as well, and an opportunity to take advantage of this extra time to spend with your family and show some extra love. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bass. Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you. And I want to share as well that I'm very excited this evening that there are a lot of really good things that have been happening and a lot of positive things to talk about. I want to echo a lot of the comments that I'm receiving from parents and from the community as how responsive the school division was and how proactive we were once we got the governor's order and everyone sprung into action with getting the distribution of the devices. I immediately got the phone call at my own house in regards to, do you have a device? And can you log in online and being connected with the resources? And I've been getting lots of compliments and positive feedback from the community about how responsive we have been and about how proactive we have been in terms of getting the work out there and getting the packets distributed and so that people can do the work. And you heard tonight, I want to emphasize to all the students who are listening, you heard tonight that the doing the work, doing the packets can only help your grade. It's not going to hurt you. You know, not doing it is going to be painful for you, but if you do it, it can only help you. So for all the students who have been procrastinating perhaps on getting those packets done, now hopefully that's the encouragement that you needed to hear tonight. And please spread the word that doing those packets and turning in that work is only going to hurt you. So please continue to work on that. Being self-motivated and being self-driven is a life skill. So this is a great time to build that kind of a life skill. And on my own household, this has been a great time for my own kids to learn how to cook more. They've been learning to cook meals more and, you know, breaking bread more together as a family. So I hope that you all are taking that opportunity, your own families, to have more, share more meals together. It's an opportunity to have breakfast, lunch, and dinner with your family. And so spending more time around that kitchen table and growing closer together as a family. This is a great time for that. Also, I did not want to miss this opportunity tonight because for me, this has been, I think, four or five years in the making in terms of, you know, the appointment that we saw tonight, which is a really, to me, it's been a monument. It's a really big deal. And I'll put it in perspective by saying there was Lord Kelvin. Lord Kelvin, he is one of the most famous mathematicians of all time. He's responsible for the first and second law of thermodynamics. And he said, if you cannot measure it, you cannot control it. And tonight, we put in place a Director of Equity Assessment and Strategic Operations. One of the key documents that I, you know, do like to read them, that I love to read is the budget, of course, but secondary, our strategic plan and the progress that we make on it. So to know that we now are going to be proactively working towards that, working towards measurement, measuring equity in our division, measuring the strength of our programs, the operational effectiveness of what we're getting. That's been, for me, a drive and a vision for a very long time. I'm so thankful that the administration has heard that that was a need and saw it, and we feel that position now. So going forward, we're going to be able to be very proactive in making assessments of our programs and making wise strategic decisions with taxpayer dollars. So I'm really excited about that and did not want to let the night go without mentioning that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Ely.
Thank you. I want to first take this time to thank the staff of Newport News Public School System. Y'all have been working around the clock to make sure all the children and all the staff have the needs met so they can move on through this pandemic and be successful. Our kids, like Deckers was saying, with all the at-home devices, has definitely have made a difference, especially in my community. A lot of the kids and parents were kind of nervous at first. But with all the devices and support that the schools have given to the children has been overwhelming, and I greatly appreciate the support. Also, I'd like to thank the Newport News City Council for full funding our budget this year. That's been, we definitely, the right step far as moving forward with this great partnership from Newport News. So I want to commend our city council as well as our city manager for fulfilling the superintendent's budget as well as the school board budget. Also, I would like to say congratulations to my great friend, Ms. Shamika Gerald, proud principal of Heritage High School. I feel like I'm a hurricane, I'm over there so much, just making sure our kids and our teachers are happy. So I know the 5,800 families definitely going to miss Ms. Gerald. She was a great asset to Newport News Public School System, as well as the heritage. The kids love her. She was so interactive with the kids, the principals, the teachers, everybody over there, custodians. She was hands-on, so she's definitely going to be missed. Also, I want to send a special thanks to our first responders in Newport News, as well as Hampton, that is working around the clock to make sure all communities are safe. They're doing a great job. Our hospitals, both Centerra and Riverside Regional Hospital are doing a great job. So I would like to thank all of our first responders for all the great work that they're doing. And I also like to thank our senior class, as well as their parents and families, for just working with Newport News Public School System, our superintendent, as well as the school board. We want to do what's best for you, and we definitely, I was very excited to hear that the superintendent, as well as his leadership staff, did a Zoom meeting with the senior class to see what they wanted. He didn't leave it up to the school board to decide or him to decide. He wanted input from the students, the seniors itself. So I want to give a special thanks to the superintendent and staff for going that extra step to make sure that we don't do what we want, because it's not about us. It's about what the senior class wants. So thank you again to the superintendent and the leadership staff. And I want everybody to continue to be safe, and we will get through this as a community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to start off with a beautiful definition of leadership, one that influences other people to accomplish their mission by providing direction, purpose, and motivation. So I want to start by thanking my chairman, Mr. Hunter, and also the superintendent. Also, my fellow and school board members for your leadership during this trying time. Also, the administration and staff, school teachers, everyone in Newport News Public School System. Because at the end of the day, you know, at every level, we provide direction, purpose, and motivation. I think coming out of this situation, I think parents will have a different perspective on what it is about teaching and how difficult it can be to teach it in any public school system. I think they will also understand how dedicated our teachers are. And I think there will be a different perspective when we start back to school. I want to thank the parents for all the support that they have given their child and also given the support to the school system by understanding that, you know, these things take time to iron out. And just the administration staff, Dr. Parker, you guys have done a great job in making sure this thing runs fluid. I've learned a lot just by participating in a lot of things that you guys have put forth. So I really appreciate the effort. And school board members, thank you for all your dedication and support and your patience. So with that, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Vice Chair, Mrs. Searls-Lawes.
Well, I just have to reiterate the thankfulness from this board to Dr. Parker and his team. It has been amazing to see you all negotiate these turbulent waters at this time. And I am excited because there was a major theme from all the wonderful presentations, informative presentations this evening, and that is what is best for students. It was verbally said, and then it was implied with the decisions from whether it was curriculum or, you know, just mental health, support for students on a new platform. We're doing it, and I'm really excited to know that we're capable of doing it. This came at a time in our school calendar when we usually would be doing so much energy towards end-of-year thinking, testing. That was put aside, and how did we use this energy? We used it to actually make strides that we would never have made really on our own just because the time is just never there. But we've used it in a very positive way, such that we can go to a virtual platform, such that our approach to equity takes on a new face right now. We've really used this time well, and I'm really proud of us. I'm excited to see what we continue to do through this fourth quarter, through the summer, and in the fall. So to everyone on this call, thank you so much for all you're doing for Newport News Public Schools.
And thank you, Ms. Lawes. I guess that brings me to myself at the end. Again, there's nothing else to say, but there's great things that are happening in Newport News Public Schools. I'm going to echo all the things that were said tonight, again, to all the teachers, principals, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, counselors, social workers, cap, you name it, we stepped up. I would also say that with 28,000-plus kids, Newport News was first. We were first out on the news to tell you what we were doing. We were the first to get our plans out. Some of the local schools are just getting computers into some of the middle schools' hands. We have done an outstanding job of, and I'm not bragging, but I'm just telling you, Dr. Parker, your team, all here getting this meeting set up tonight. Thank you to my fellow school board members. I believe, I'm going to brag a little bit, I thought this meeting was very nice. And again, we are adapting to changes here in life. Again, as Ms. Searls-Lawes says, there are so many things that we typically would be doing. Teacher of the Year, Staff Person of the Year, Salute a Victorian of the Year, all those things that have taken place, are not going to be done this year in a sense of what they used to be done. But I'm going to say, let's us all continue to work together, and we do that by staying apart. And we will all get through this. And that said, if there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting. Good night, everyone. Please stay safe.